I'd like to call to order the Wednesday, April 27th, 2022 city council meeting. If everybody will rise and please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Hutchings?
Present.
Ruffridge?
Here.
Nelson?
Present.
Carey?
Present.
Chilson?
Present.
Parker?
Present.
Student Representative Knowles.
I don't see her.
You have a quorum.
Uh, thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda and consent agenda?
I move to approve the agenda and the consent agenda provided for.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda or consent agenda? Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you. Two amendments today. So first, I move to add lay down resolution 2022-018, waiving formal bidding procedures and authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Andrews and Sons LLC in the amount of $55,250 for spruce bark beetle hazard tree mitigation to the regular agenda as agenda item 9B4.
Okay. Are there any objections to adding that resolution? Seeing none, and you have another one?
I have another, thank you. Also move to add lay down resolution 2022-019, waiving formal bidding procedures and authorizing the city manager to execute contracts with Stumpy's Tree Service in the amount of $53,911 for spruce bark beetle hazard tree mitigation to the regular agenda as agenda item 9B5.
Are there any objections to adding this resolution to the agenda? Seeing none, those two resolutions have been added. Madam Clerk, would you please read the consent agenda?
Approval of minutes, April 13, 2022, special council meeting minutes, April 13, 2022, regular council meeting minutes, new business ordinances for introduction, ordinance 2022-013, repealing and reenacting Soldatna Municipal Code 1.08.080, minor offense fine schedule, and amending sections of SMC titles 1, 8, 13, 15, and 17 to update definitions and standards for certain violations, fees, and enforcement introduced by the city manager set for public hearing on May 11, 2022. Ordinance 2022-014, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by $22,325 in the general fund for fees associated with the collection of remote seller sales tax by the Alaska Remote Seller Sales Tax Commission on behalf of the City of Soldatna, introduced by the city manager, set for public hearing on May 11, 2022. Resolutions, resolution 2022-015, approving the employment agreement between the City of Soldatna and the Soldatna interim city clerk, Breck Hewitt, introduced by the mayor. Other items, action memorandum random, 2022-010, authorizing two-way video teleconferencing moving forward, introduced by the acting city clerk. And that is your consent agenda.
Uh, thank, thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any public comments on any of the items just read by the clerk? Seeing no one here in the council chambers, is there anyone online? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Is there any participants?
I see no hands raised.
All right. Thank you. Having no one else wishing to speak, the approval of the agenda and consent agenda is back before the council. Are there any objections to approving the agenda and consent agenda? Hearing none, the agenda and consent agenda are approved. Moving on, we approved minutes. We now have presentations with prior notice, and we have Shannon Davis, the executive director of the Soldatna Chamber of Commerce, giving us our quarterly report. Welcome, Mrs. Davis.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Parker, I'm happy to be with you all for our first quarter update for 2022. So the last three months have been really great. You know, it's been wonderful to start feeling a return to normalcy. That said, you know, we're still kind of rolling with things, just like all of our members have had to do, just like all of you have had to do. A perfect example is last week, we had to cancel an all-day board retreat that we had planned because we had some illnesses in the office. But really, if the pandemic has taught us anything, it's how to roll with it. And that's what we do, and that's what we have been doing the last three months. I'll touch on our larger events later in the report. First, I'm really happy to let you know that Sarah, our visitor center coordinator, is fully staffed up for the busy summer months ahead. We have five visitor center attendants already hired. Three of them are returning from last year. They're phenomenal. They're going to represent Soldatna so well. We will be returning to our pre-pandemic hours, so we, as of Memorial Day, we will be open seven days a week again, all the way through Labor Day. So we're super excited to have overcome our staffing shortages, and we're ready to go. New this year, we're planning two tourism after hours, open house events in the visitor center for our travel industry members. So on May 12, and then on the 19th, from 5:00 to 6:30, we're inviting our members to come to the visitor center, meet the new staff, network with each other, and then they'll all have the opportunity to give like a one-minute elevator speech on what it is that's new in their business, and introduce themselves to the others in the room, because we all know how important networking is to our visitor businesses. Of course, we also have to make sure that we are working hard to invite our visitors to come to Soldatna. So we have been working hard. We attended the Great Alaska Sportsman Show. It was great to have it back. We went in early April. We distributed, of course, Soldatna's marketing materials, our guide, member information, and we also had our lineup for Music in the Park already set. I was printing it like the night before she left for that. So we handed out almost 400 of those lineups at the Great Alaska Sportsman Show. We've been getting our guides into circulation. They've been distributed to RACs throughout the Kena Peninsula. You should be seeing them in grocery stores and things like that. We've sent 1,000 to travel planners through the Alaska Travel Industry Association, and they've also been distributed to visitor centers throughout Alaska in addition to the mailings that we do to individuals. We've been buttoning up all of our traditional ad buys for the summer, and we've been experimenting a little with some fun new promotions. I know that Breck sent you a memo that was an addendum to our council report. It looks like this. You might not have had an opportunity yet to watch the little videos that are in it, but we contracted with Martin Media for a whole slew of things last summer, really, and these were just delivered to us out of that contract. There's one 15-second video, and then, and then four other 30-second little promotions for Soldatna, little commercials, and they're all unique and different and have a good catch to them, and we're so looking forward to getting these out on our social channels. And they really are of quality that they could be run on TV as well. So I hope you have an opportunity to look at all of those, and then also the public will be able to view them online as well. We also have been working with an Instagram influencer. It's a girl in Alaska. You'll see a picture in your report here of her wearing her Soldatna hoodie and her Soldatna buff. We've created a promotion online. She's got little video snippets that send people to our website, and if people book a stay in Soldatna and then show us their booking with a receipt, we send them a visitor guide and this pretty snazzy buff that we've created. We just released this a week ago, and we've already got 10 people who've gone through all the criteria to receive it. Three of them are actually from out of state. Five are from Anchorage, and then we had somebody from North Pole and Jay Bear. So it's fun to see that it's working already, and we just love doing something a little bit new and different and reaching a kind of a different demographic than maybe just the older visitor base that we've targeted in the past. Our social stats are continuing to rise. Our website traffic was down a little bit when I looked at the entire quarter compared to last year, but then when I really dove into that a little bit more, we had a huge push of traffic right when the lockdowns were easing in January of 2021. So when I took those that month out, we show that our numbers are actually still increasing on the site, and our page views are really growing dramatically, which is great. It means that people are spending more time on our site, getting more information off of it. Before I go into kind of a recap of some of our events for the last quarter, I do just want to let you know that we are looking forward to a very robust summer. Certainly, our friends in Southeast are very excited about the fact that the cruises are returning to Alaska. We're not exactly sure how that's going to translate with independent travel, but the news from our members is that some of them are already completely booked for the summer. We are anticipating a very good year. Looking at some of our events from the last quarter, it was our honor to bring back the chamber's in-person award celebration. Our winners are listed on the back of our report. I would like to shout out John Zarneski and his team who received our Government and Civic Affairs Award for the work that they've done with the Downtown Improvement Project. Also, councilmember Ruffridge, who received our Person of the Year Award for the outstanding work he did to stand up our vaccination clinics, and just everything that he did throughout last year. He did with a smile on his face and made an incredible difference in our community. So thank you and congratulations on that award. Immediately following the award celebration, we had Frozen River Fest. It was, it was wonderful to have it be warm, but it was so warm that the park was wet, the park was slushy, the park was icy. And I can't say enough about what Parks and Rec did to prepare that park for 1,500 people to be in it and to be in it safely. It was an incredible night. We had over 1,000 attendees that came and purchased their drink cups, and then we had over 300 who were non-drinking with the kids and the volunteers. We definitely had over 1,500 people, which is the most that we've had since we started. It was an incredible night. And again, thank you to Parks and Recreation for all the work they did. St. Patrick's Day was really well-attended, the parade. Thanks again to the city. They lent us sandwich boards to help get information out to the public about the road closures because we did change that route last year, and there was some confusion about traffic patterns and things like that. I think it went more smoothly this year, and also people were more spread out. Certainly, we had a great attendance at it. And I have to say, those kids, because we're handing candy, we're actually, instead of throwing it, and the kids are all so polite and thankful, and we just, we've got some great kids here in Soldatna. Let's see, that brings me, now we'll talk about our plans for the summer. As I've stated, our band lineup for the concert series has been approved. We've got our two big headline sponsors back, Alaska USA and Kendall. ConocoPhillips has come on as a new sponsor this year, sponsoring pre-concert lawn activities. We've got our 12 second-tier sponsors back in set. With all the community support, this concert series, which just a few years ago was seriously in the red, is now sustainable, and we're just very proud of that and also so thankful for all the community support. Which brings me to some exciting news that you are the first to hear about. I did just return from LA. I attended the Levitt, they call it a convening. It's a convention for all the communities that have either Levitt AMP grants as we do, or the big Levitt pavilions. And they made some pretty major announcements while we were there. So the Levitt Foundation supports about 15 Levitt AMP communities and then about eight huge, big Levitt pavilions. Over the past 20 years, they've spent $20 million supporting these programs. The Levitt Foundation has decided to become a spend-down foundation. So their plan is in the next 20 years, they're going to put $250 million into their communities through these programs. So what does that mean for communities like Soldatna? Well, as we are already an AMP grantee, and we are in such good standing, they have decided to offer those that, like Soldatna, have been with them for a while, two different options. One will be to apply for a three-year grant that increases the amount from $25,000 to $30,000 annually with no requirement to do the online voting. So, and they pretty much assured me that if we were already receiving it, unless we did something really heinous in our application, we would be guaranteed this grant. So $90,000 over the course of the next three years with the option to apply for two more cycles. So up to nine more years of AMP. And then they are still kind of fleshing out what they're doing with the remainder. So the goal is, after 20 years, to have that entire amount spent down. Do I have permission to update you just on one other quick thing?
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay. So the second option would be to apply for $15,000 grants instead for three years. They would loosen the restrictions on, on how the money could be spent if we went that direction. I don't want to get in front of my board on this. They've seen it in writing, but we haven't discussed it yet. We will this Friday. But it's a pretty exciting opportunity for Soldatna, and I'm glad to share that information with you. The last little bit that I had is that we have a ribbon cutting at Whistle Hill at noon on Saturday. It's the first Tesla charging station in the state of Alaska. It's pretty cool for Soldatna to be hosting this, and I'd love to see you all there. It's going to be at noon. And that's my report.
Thank you, Shannon. Any questions?
I feel like we should have clapped after that.
We don't, we don't want to, until, until our board makes a decision.
Okay.
But, so, that is fabulous news from the Levitt Foundation, and that three years ago, the community stood up and said, yes, we want to get vote, vote. And we were one of the communities that got voted in. And then we got voted in a second year, and now I can see why they like Concert in the Park.
I do, too. It gives me goosebumps. We are doing reusable cups in the park this year, and the beer garden as well.
Any other comments, questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll see you in...
See you in the park.
Yeah, yeah. So that brings us to public comments and presentations. Are there any members from the public who would like to speak on any item not appearing on the agenda? And for those participating but through Zoom, please raise your hand. If you would like to comment, app users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button, and phone participants by dialing pound nine on your telephone. Anyone who wants to comment on things that aren't on the agenda? Seeing nobody, that brings us to the, oh, I forgot.
I see no hands raised.
Okay, but you would have told me. Thank you. That brings us to the Assembly Legislative Report. Assemblymember Cox, thank you for coming.
Thank you. I'm gonna have to ask Shannon later how I can sign up to be an influencer. That sounds like a pretty fun job. And I'm super excited about all the things she was talking about with, with the Levitt AMP. I hope to see all of you guys there every other week, and I think it would be fun. Some of the things that we'll be going over at our meeting this next week, and I only did look at it yesterday and a little bit today, so I still have some things to look at. So if there are other questions, I can always get back to folks. We will be, we did get the mayor's budget or proposed budget, and a few of the quick things I saw in there is the mayor is looking to add 4.5 FTE full-time positions within the mayor's office, and then 10 other positions within the borough as well for 14.5 new positions. And then he's also looking to lower the mill rate by .2 mills. And then we also have a school bond of $65.5 million that we will be discussing. Has not been approved yet, but we will be looking at and seeing what, how that will fit in. And so I'm very curious to see how that all works together with adding positions and reducing mill rate, because I know there's a lot to do with increase in property taxes because of just the fluctuation of cost. But that also means that costs are going to go up for other items, too. So we'll have to see how that all works in. Further down, we have something similar to you guys is our ordinance 2022-11 is emergency harvest of spruce bark beetle trees on borough land. I thought that important to just add to you guys because we are looking at pretty much the same thing as City of Soldatna is, is how do we mitigate all the issues with dead trees and possible hazards, fire, falling, all those kinds of things. Next item would be ordinance, introduction of ordinance 2022-12. It's emergency service communications center advisory board and reactivating the advisory group. I know this is of interest to the City of Soldatna. The biggest change that I saw, there are some changes in it, so definitely look through it. The one that I saw, just briefly looking at it this afternoon, was it's going to go from a nine-member group to an eight-member group, or this is the suggestion, and then having the ninth member be the mayor, only voting in a tie. So that is something to look at as a change. And then the last one I was going to add, and we will be talking about this later, it looks like on your agenda, which is why I came in tonight, was 2022-08, the exemption for IPPs, and I definitely will make a comment at that point. Otherwise, I'll just leave you with, there are going to be, as far as I know, a few small amendments. None of the amendments will change the intent of the ordinance. They're mostly to clarify for assessing, and it was just some questions. Because I, I should have led with this, but I'm also a co-sponsor of that. I did add on to that this last meeting. And so we did, I called and talked to the assessors, and there are some small changes that we'll be making within that. Like I say, nothing major. There, it's clarifying items, things like when does a time period begin? Would 15 years be 15 from the start of the project, or would it be 15 years for each section of a project if you're doing it in pieces? And just having some of that clarity in there, so items like that. So, and if there's any questions.
Thank you, Assemblymember Cox. Any questions for Mr. Cox?
Thank you.
Seeing none, thank you. That brings us to administrative reports. 7A, solicitation of tree removal quotes and intent to award contracts for the beetle kill tree mitigation. Can we have a report from the administration, please?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Parker. We had included this on the agenda as a placeholder to let the council know and the public know that this discussion would be coming and that there would be potentially lay down resolutions. And we do have two lay down resolutions that were added to the agenda tonight that you'll be discussing later, so I don't have anything additionally to add at this point. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to public hearings. We have ordinances. We have ordinance 2022-012, amending Soldatna Municipal Code 2.28080, discipline and discharge regarding the removal of discussion records and written warnings from employees' personnel file. May I have a motion to enact? Thank you, Member Hutchings. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Can we have a report from the administration, please?
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor Parker. This, I brought forward this ordinance requesting this code change not as a result of any particular issue with an employee, but as, after doing a deeper review of this section of our code, our HR manager and I flagged this language as potentially not achieving what we would consider industry standard in terms of human resources management. So the code currently specifies that disciplinary notices get removed and disregarded after 24 months. And disciplinary notices is a term that's used generally in the code to mean anything from a written warning or a reprimand up to and including suspension. And when I looked at this particular section of code, it was amended by ordinance in 2015, and that was a complete rewrite of the entire personnel code. I think that ordinance was 28 pages long. This one paragraph was just one piece of many things that were amended as part of that ordinance adoption. And what this section had previously said was that written warnings get purged after 24 months. That aligns with what I think is best practice, and it aligns with what is prudent on behalf of the municipality in that we give a mechanism where low-level concerns get purged, and, and if they're not repeated, which many of them never are again, then those get removed out of the file, and they don't become a part of a person's permanent record. But it certainly is in the municipality's best interest to retain records of more serious potential infractions. And so essentially what I'm asking with this code rewrite is that we reinstate the language similar to what, how it was in 2015 and prior, where it's specifying that discussion records and written warnings get removed after 24 months. Other types of disciplinary actions would remain in that file indefinitely. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. The public hearing is now open. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? For, I see no one here. For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button, and phone participants by dialing pound nine on your phone. Do we have anyone on?
I see no hands raised.
Thank you. The item is now back before the council. Are there any council comments? Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Hutchings?
Yes.
Ruffridge?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Chilson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Student Representative Knowles?
Yes.
You have six yes votes.
Yes.
Thank you. The vote was six yes, six to zero. And welcome, Councilmember Knowles. Moving on, that brings us to new business. We have no ordinances for tonight. We have no resolution, resolution, we're now down to resolution number two, resolution 2022-016, supporting the Alaska Children's Institute for the Performing Arts Application to the Alaska State Council on the Arts for its Community Partnership Grant Program introduced by the mayor and Councilmember Ruffridge. May I have a motion to...
Make a motion to enact resolution 2022-016, supporting the Alaska Children's Institute for the Performing Arts Application to the Alaska State Council on the Arts for its Community Arts Partnership Grant Program.
May I have a second? Second, thank you. Report from Mayor Whitney and Councilmember Ruffridge.
I'll go. This is a, obviously, we've talked many, many times about the Alaska Children's Institute for the Performing Arts in the last couple of meetings, better known as Triumvirate Theater, through some resolutions. This is a support from the municipality and from this council for the grant program that was identified through some of the process that we were going through in identifying maybe having a musical in the park, and this would be a way to ensure that that is able to happen through this grant program. That is in the process of being written now and is due at the end of April. And so this would go a long way towards establishing the support for that grant, and I would certainly welcome your support as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Ruffridge. Mayor Whitney, did you have any additional comments?
Yes, I would strongly support this resolution. I wish the council and hope the council will vote for approval. This will show that the City of Soldatna and the administration and council strongly support arts program that the Triumph and Theater is trying to put on, and that we certainly hope that they do receive the grant. Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us back to public. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? Yes, sir.
Thank you. Tyson Cox, 237 West Reedout. I just wanted to mention that I would really love to see the council support this resolution. As being a member of the City of Soldatna is, I find it very valuable to go to activities and to do things that have to do with the arts, not just at our park, but all of the types of activities that they provide. As far as the productions go, my daughter is active in, in doing some of these productions. She's never done, she didn't do the one at the park last year, but she has been very active with them. And one of the things that provides kids is it provides them an outlet. And sometimes it provides them an outlet they don't necessarily have otherwise. And so the one thing I've seen from her is she's been able to speak in front of groups, things like that. I would have loved to have had her
I would have loved to have had her come tonight, but she did have other things going on, being that she's in those kinds of activities. She gets very busy with some of those things. But she's been able to talk. She did go in front of the Kenai City Council when they were talking about possibly donating land for Triumph and, and so she has that availability. And why I say that is, is at 12 years old, there is no way you would have seen me in front of a group like that. And so what I'm getting at is her being able to practice that and be in front of people, it's not only being able to act, it's being able to speak in front of people, to get your ideas across to folks in a productive manner. And so I really would love to see the support of this council for this resolution and anything else that may come your guys' way. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Cox? Thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify? Are there any members of the public who've raised their hand?
I see no hands raised.
All right, thank you. Having no one else who wishes to speak, the item is back before the council. Are there any councilmember comments? Seeing no councilmember comments. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Ruffridge?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Chilson?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Yes.
You have six yes votes.
Thank you. A vote of six to nothing, the resolution passes. That brings us to Resolution 2022-017, Supporting Proposed Kenai Peninsula Borough Ordinance 2022-08, and Ordinance Amending KPB 5.12.116 to Broaden Economic Development Property Tax Exemption for Independent Producers, brought to you by Councilmember Parker. May I have a motion to adopt, please?
Councilmember Carey beat me to it.
I move the adoption of Resolution 2022-017, Supporting Proposed Kenai Peninsula Borough Ordinance 2022-08, Amending KPB 512116 to Broaden Economic Development Property Tax Exemption for Independent Power Producers.
I'll second.
Thank you. I will now give my report on this. As was noted, this ordinance is before the Borough Assembly next week and would promote continued economic development and helps diversify our power generation here on the Kenai Peninsula. As you all know, the majority of our power right now is produced by Homer Electric, and they get 84% of that comes from natural gas, 16% from hydroelectric, and then those of us who have solar panels in our homes, what we don't utilize, gets put into the HEA system, and I would imagine that is probably pretty miniscule at this point. So, "An independent power producer has identified a location in Sterling for installation of a solar farm to generate power for resale to HEA. For this development to be economically viable, an amendment to the Borough Code is necessary. The proposed change to the code would provide for a tax exemption to the extent allowable under state statute for 15 years." This proposal and proposed ordinance change was also reviewed by the Borough's Resilience and Security Advisory Commission, and they are supporting this tax exemption as well. As noted in their report, the electric grid on the peninsula is small, semi-isolated, and dependent on one primary source, natural gas. Diversifying our source of energy can increase local resilience and benefit the entire community. The installation of this solar farm would be the second in Alaska, and has, was noted, less than 5% of the electricity generated in Alaska is generated by independent power producers compared to in continental United States, about 40%. So, this, I would urge the councilmembers to support this proposed ordinance and resolution, as this will provide economic benefit and bring construction jobs and year-round maintenance jobs. So, that is the end of my report. At this point, I would ask, are there any members of the public who would wish to speak on this item? Please come forth, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Jen Miller, and I live at 1570 Garden Street in Anchorage, Alaska. Mayor Whitney and Sedatna City Council, first off, thank you so much for option or opportunity to speak to you tonight. As I said, my name is Jen Miller, and I'm the CEO of Renewable IPP. The IPP stands for Independent Power Producers. IPPs are, IPPs privately build and operate electric generation facilities, and it can be any type of technology, whether it's solar, wind, hydro, any type. IPPs generate their own electricity and sell it at cost-competitive prices to the utilities, so we're a wholesaler, basically. Renewable IPP is an Alaska-grown company, established in 2017. We develop, construct, and operate utility-scale solar farms here in the state, and we're responsible for Alaska's largest solar farm, which is in Willow, and we're actually embarking on another project that's six times its size in Houston. As Vice Mayor Parker mentioned, we are also embarking on or pursuing a, our proposed Kenai Peninsula Solar Farm project. This project would be located in Sterling, and will meet about 6 and 1/2 of HEA's electricity demand. It'll create around 40 to 60 construction jobs over the two-year construction cycle, and will create 10 to 20 part-time maintenance jobs throughout its 25 to 40-year operating life. The project is currently in development, and we're working on technical studies and reviewing economics to see if we can proceed with the project. If successful, construction is planned to occur over two years and is anticipated to occur in 2024, 2025. The development phase is very long, there's a lot of studies and contracts that need to be put in place to proceed. In October last year, I approached the Kenai Peninsula Borough Assembly and requested if the Borough might be able to provide property tax relief for independent power producers to help enable the project. The request has been discussed over multiple meetings and is now before the Borough as Ordinance 2022-08. I'm here tonight to ask the City of Sedatna support for this ordinance. The ordinance would provide IPPs who apply for the exemption about a 25% property, 25% property tax break for 15 years. The ordinance broadens the existing Economic Development Property Tax Exemption Code, which is available to any business for five years, and it just expands that to 15. As applied to our proposed Kenai Peninsula Solar Farm project, the ordinance would result in the following, so this is kind of a breakdown of the numbers. Over the project's initial 25-year project life, there would be, the Borough would provide property tax relief that would amount to $800,000. In return for that $800,000, we would create 3.8 million in net new property tax revenue. In addition to that, we'll be spending $4.5 million on local jobs and services, and we'll reduce the cost of electricity at HEA members by 1.9 million. So, it's, in return to that, in return for that $800,000 property tax relief, there's 10.2 million in economic development benefits.
If you could wrap it up.
Yeah, I'll wrap it up, okay. Let's see here. I think encouraging IPPs will help us diversify our energy generation in the future and introduce competition to the utility market. As Alaska has the highest, second-highest electricity costs in the nation, I think IPPs can play a huge role in providing secure and cost-competitive energy for Alaskans in the future. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there any questions from Ms. Miller? Councilmember Ruffridge?
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Just one quick question to start. You had mentioned the operating life of the facility at, I thought you said, 25 to 40 years? Is that correct? Is that renewable?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Ruffridge. So, yeah, probably the initial contract life, I would estimate it to be around 25 years, because that's what we're doing in Houston, so it'll be somewhere in that neighborhood. The solar panels are estimated to last around 40 years right now, but if, you know, there's solar panels that were built in the 70s that are still operating today. And there's also been a lot of technological advancements in solar panel recycling, and a lot of solar farms get repanelled, and they can just keep going. And so, yeah, it's definitely an initial life. Thanks.
Any other questions? Mr. Nelson?
And thank you very much for coming down. Just a quick question. Do you already, or does your organization already have the property that you're proposing to put the farm on, or is it currently an acquisition? Can you speak to that?
We'll be doing a long-term lease agreement for the land, and right now we have a memorandum of understanding which holds the land in place, and that is with the Kenai Native Association and its land that's actually not currently in the property tax rolls, because it's exempted, but once they lease it to us, it will be subject to exemptions. And the land part, there will be no exemption for that value, so we'll pay full property taxes on that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you for coming down and testifying. Is there anybody else in the audience who'd like to testify? Come forth, state your name and address, please, and you have two hands.
Hello, my name's David Thomas. I'm a Director of Strategic Services for Homer Electric Association, 28280 Airport Way, Kenai. And I'm not here to advocate for or against tax policy, which is more properly the purview of elected officials, but more to informationally make a few points. If our energy providers have lower costs, then we can negotiate lower power purchase agreements with them. And as a member-owned, not-for-profit cooperative, there's no profit extracted at the HEA level, and all savings are passed on to our members through lower rates, or at least downward pressure on rates. The Kenai Peninsula is resource-rich in many ways, gas, oil, tasty fish. It's also resource-rich in hydroelectric, wind, and solar projects. We have lower costs of land here than, of course, in the Anchorage Bowl, and I can imagine a future in which there are multiple projects of this sort. And these kinds of projects are consistent with our board's desire to not have all our eggs in one basket, not have 85% of our generation from a single resource, from a single provider, but to have more diversity in our, in our energy supply. And there's an aspect of risk mitigation in having multiple sources, because we signed a power purchase agreement, and for 25 years, we know what the beginning price is. We negotiate an escalator of 1 and 1/2 or 2%, and then that is what it is for 25 years. And I don't think anyone has a crystal ball on what gas prices are doing, except they're probably not going down, but for that component of our energy, that would be a known quantity going forward, and potentially even less than the rate of inflation. Vice Mayor Parker pointed out the rooftop solar. We have more net metering customers, more penetration than the other utility on the rail belt, but this proposed facility would be nine times the capacity of all of the rooftop solar over the Western Peninsula currently is. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Cox? Mr. Ruffridge?
Really intrigued by that last comment, and more for my own education purposes, but do you know, on average, how many homes are hooked, I guess, from solar into a grid on the Western?
485.
Okay, thank you.
Total's about 3 megawatts, nameplate capacity.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. Is there anyone else? Mr. Cox?
Tyson Cox, Borough Assembly Representative for Sedatna and co-sponsor of the ordinance. Why I wanted to come and speak to this tonight is I did want to ask that this be supported by the City of Sedatna, because this resolution then would support our ordinance, Ordinance 2022-08. And in the discussions so far, one thing I wanted to make sure everyone knows is all this is, is a code change. And within that code change, what happens is that then we can have the discussion, because it's not actually stating that any IPP will automatically get anything. What it states is that there will be an application process, that application, if approved, will go to the assessor's office. Once it goes to the assessor's office, there will be a recommendation that comes to the Borough Assembly, and then the Borough Assembly will then vote on that recommendation for that particular case. One other thing to note is that it is up to 15 years, which means it does not automatically grant 15 years. And so in talking with the assessor's office, one suggestion might be that they give us a five-year plan, a 10-year plan, and a 15-year plan, and then the assembly then gets to look at that and then make the appropriate vote for what they think should go forward, and partly because there's a lot more to this. There's depreciation, there's all those kinds of things, and sometimes some projects may not have as long of a depreciation schedule as some of the other items, because really all this is, is considered, the land itself is just that, but this is one of the first times we've done some exemptions for personal business property besides the standard exemption of $100,000 that goes to every resident. So, with that, I wanted to just talk a little bit about risk, and one of the reasons that I decided to sponsor this is I decided to be a sponsor on this, because as the Borough, that's what I'm concerned about with. What are we putting ourselves at risk for? Well, when we've spoken at our meetings about this several times, with Jen, some of that is, in a situation like hers, you're looking at the possibility of going forward at a 25% possibility without any assistance from the Borough in these way. She had told us that that would be around the 50, maybe 60% range if we do assist with some tax credits in that way, or not credits, but tax exemptions. For me, I look at that and say, okay, really what we're talking about, and just so everyone knows, we're not talking about all or half of the entire mill rate for that area. We're talking about 2.07 mills out of the 4.7 mills that is, that the Borough is responsible to getting. It does not come out of service area monies or anything like that. So, the maximum amount would be 2.05 mills, which is, in most areas, about 20%, and that would be up to 15 years. And with that, if there's any questions.
Any, any questions for Mr. Cox? Ms. Hutchings? Mr. Cox, thank you for this clarification. The question I have, as you were talking about there, you are working with the assessor's office now, there will probably be changes and amendments made to this ordinance. Is it good for us to approve this now, or do we wait for the changes that you're making?
Well, like I had stated, the only two that I'm looking at making is, number one, I'm looking at having the discussion, and it's just a, it would be an amendment coming forward to the Assembly for discussion on whether or not the original $100,000 exemption for everyone should be included, or should that be exempted? That would be the one. The other one that I have coming forward is going to be defining that 15-year period. And, and that's only if, right now, legal's looking at it, that's if they decide on the 15-year period if that's necessary, because there's already existing code that may or may not cover it. That's, they told me they'd look at it and tell me if we need to do that.
And again, if I might, so does that mean that you don't see anything else coming from any of the other Assemblymembers?
There is one included in here from President Johnson. If I can, if you give me a second, I can find it. Without looking directly at it, it was talking about, here it is, his amendment will, it's What he had told me it would change is that, it's just changing the wording. He said the amount that is going to be exempted would be the same. For some reason, the assessor's office asked him to change the wording so that it was more clear and would be able to change with time a little bit easier than saying, we're going to, I think the way it's written now is it has to do with what the state requires for us to use for school funding, and instead of using those, that terminology, it's just going to state a percentage, I believe.
Okay. Good. And one more thing. So, if these changes get made, it's really not going to affect the City of Sedatna.
So if these changes get made, it, it's really not going to affect the City of Sedatna because it doesn't affect our taxes because we, we would have some kind of approval if somebody wanted to come into the city and build a solar panel farm?
I would assume so, but with, well, with your guys' codes and things, I think you'd have to get some sort of a permit for that. But on the other end of it is, is the 2.05 mills comes directly out of the borough section of mill rate. It would not come from any other section of mill rate, whether that be from a city, a service area, or, or any other assessment that's been put on there.
Okay, thank you.
If I might, Mr. Cox, so this is going to be for public hearing Tuesday and final council or Assembly action, correct?
It is up for that. I have heard that there's a possibility of a postponement. And the reason for that postponement may be to have other representatives from our local entities come in and talk to us again. They couldn't schedule for this last meeting, so we may have them come in and speak with us.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Cox.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the audience who would wish, Ms. Dr. Kroll, if you would?
Good evening. I'm Henry Kroll, 36156 Tremolo Circle. I'll try to resist the urge to regurgitate all the information that you've heard already because I think it was very good. Vice Mayor Parker, your summary was excellent. I, I just want to voice my support for this resolution. This is a, ultimately, it's a very important topic. I mean, what we're talking about is solar development. This is, this project is hopefully going to be one of many. And the, the borough ordinance that, the proposed changes, the borough ordinance will help to facilitate more projects like this and facilitate getting this one completed too. But this is important on many, many levels. First of all, as an individual, I, you know, I, I pay for electricity at home. I have a number of businesses in Sedatna. Electricity costs go up just like everything else. And this project ultimately could help to stabilize energy costs and help to maybe reduce the cost of electricity. One of my businesses, Fresh G65, the indoor hydroponic farm, is very electricity intensive and about a third of my overhead is electric bill. I have to, to grow 500 heads of lettuce and sell them just to pay my electric bill every month. So it's, it's kind of a big thing. So I would love to see prices go down, and that may not happen with large-scale solar, but at least we can help to stabilize it. So on an individual level, I'm very much in favor of it. On a local level, this is going to produce jobs, not only with this proposed projects, but hopefully further projects down the road. This is going to help cooperatively with HEA. It will help to diversify electricity generation, and I think that's very, very important. You put all your eggs in one basket and something happens with that basket and, and the Peninsula could be in for a real surprise. So hopefully that never happens. Statewide, this has benefits. It's going to help the state achieve its renewable energy goal of 50% renewable energy by 2025, which I think Governor Dunleavy's administration has, has put forward. And then I won't get on my soapbox and talk about global benefits, but it will help reduce greenhouse gases and whether you believe in global warming or not, doesn't matter a whole lot, but we're kind of doing some harm to our planet and this is something that will be helpful in the long run. So I urge you to vote in favor of this resolution.
Thank you, Dr. Kroll. Any questions? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
And good luck with the opening. Is there anybody else in attendance who would wish to testify on this resolution? Seeing no one here. Do we have anybody participating through Zoom? Raise your hand if you'd like to comment. Any participants?
I see no hands raised.
All right. The item is now back before the council. Is there anybody here? Any council comments? Mr. Nelson?
And I'll just, just to make a comment, I certainly appreciate the, the information that's been presented tonight and I'll, I'll be supporting this. To me, this is a no-brainer. I'm really interested to see, I hope this particular project gets off the ground and we get to see solar from an infrastructure perspective. Nothing, nothing bad ever happens by diversifying our sources and strengthening the infrastructure we have. And I think solar will be an interesting thing. We've, of course, had, you know, other alternative energy projects like hydro happen here in the Kenai Peninsula and some of those, you know, many, many years ago didn't happen with very great results. So I'll be very interested to, to see, so I'll support this and wish best of luck to this project and, and moving forward.
Thank you. Other council member comments? Mr. Carey?
Thank you. I very much support this, this project and the idea. A year ago today, I was on the Homer Electric Board, 30 years on the board over a 33-year period. And so, again, the importance of energy to all of our people is critical. Homer Electric has a very specific goal of trying to diversify, the state does, the federal government does. The reality is when government uses their funds to try to diversify, it seems to be often very expensive. So the idea of an independent producer, to me, is a much more efficient way to do this. And so I think it's good. What's actually before us is to give the borough the permission to go ahead and, and proceed on this. And that's all we're absolutely saying. And again, so this is a first step, but a critically important first step. We are again, as I mentioned earlier, at the work session in terms of Sedatna, and we're so fortunate with where we're at economically, but also where we live is a part of the rail belt from Fairbanks all the way down to the end of Homer, again, where we have Bradley Lake Dam and that, it's the least expensive power producer probably within the state and will be forever. And we're very fortunate, even if there would be a problem, we've got a huge amount of power that could feed us if there was a need because we're so close to it, which just is a huge plus that we have access to renewable. Renewable continues to become more efficient and less costly. And so that, one of the things that we could expect with this is that we would benefit from that as well. I did hear a statement, I just have to be real cautious when I hear it, an absolute statement that this will reduce the cost for HEA members. I'm going to pull back on that because, boy, you never know for sure. And, but it certainly should help in that and absolutely it will mitigate increases in cost. But I got to say, whenever anyone says, absolutely, this will reduce your electric bill, oh, don't ever say that because it just, it doesn't happen very often. And it's easy to say, but often very difficult to do. We need to diversify on all kinds of different reasons, as Dan Mixon and others. Also, we have some awesome resources here in terms of oil, gas, different things that we're going to still have. And so that by not using them right now, because we can diversify and use other resources, I do feel pretty comfortable saying that the, the value of oil and gas in the future is going to be higher. And so that we'll get a higher benefit by using those resources that are here now, later, as we need to. And also, we'll probably be specializing in terms of using those resources in more intrinsically important areas. To some extent, we're kind of wasting some of our oil and gas right now because we've, the way we use it. And so, this is an excellent idea. It's just the beginning of the process. I think it helps with HEA's goals, it helps with the state's goal, and it helps with what we should be doing to provide more ways. Competition is always good. And so, the idea of having an independent producer in competition with, with our nonprofit co-op, I think is healthy. And so just, I just see this as a plus in many ways and I hope that the council will support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carey. Any other council member comments? Mr. Ruffridge?
I just want to say, I'm also very excited about this and echo the sentiments of Mr. Carey. I think this is a excellent opportunity. I hope to attend the Borough Meeting as well on Tuesday and hear the results of this. I think it seems like a great investment in future energy. We've certainly seen some of the results of not diversifying in Europe currently. You never know what the future holds. And so, I think a somewhat limited investment for future diversification in energy is, is a smart way to go. And I agree with Mr. Nelson. It'll be interesting to see what the future holds for some of those options and if this is a, a good option, then we can continue to do more of that. So I will be supporting this resolution as well.
Thank you, Mr. Ruffridge. Further comments? Before I ask the clerk for a vote, remember 20 years ago when we had warnings of red light, yellow light, green light because we were having shortages of natural gas in Cook Inlet? And there is that possibility we get that in the future if we don't diversify. And we have now been given this opportunity to utilize wind, to utilize the sun, to, to generate power. So we should use those opportunities and, and give ourselves that diversity. So thank you for your support. And if the clerk could call the rule, please.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Chilson?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Ruffridge?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Parker?
Yes.
Student Representative Knowles? You have six yes votes.
Thank you. On a six to nothing, the resolution passes. And thank you all for coming and, and testifying. This brings us to Resolution 2022-018, waiving formal bidding procedures and authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Andrews and Sun LLC in the amount of $55,250 for the Spruce Park Beetle hazard tree mitigation introduced by the city manager. May I have a motion to adopt, please?
Motion to adopt?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson, Ms. Chilson. Report from the administration, please.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Parker. I'm going to ask Public Works Director Kyle Cornellus to give the report on the resolutions and also note that Parks and Rec Director Carmichael is here with us as well. Thank you.
Thank you. This resolution and, and its companion laydown address our Spruce Park, Spruce Park Beetle hazards in many of our public areas. They're noted in the, in the memorandum. As many of you are aware, we approached the state and were able to get approval for grant funds through FEMA, the federal agency. It's proven difficult to attain those funds with some of the, some of the requirements that have come forth, particularly some environmental documentation and, and other requirements. So we approached the state. The state recommended we go another route and use a, a separate pot of hazard mitigation money. And through their guidance, we utilized an innovative or alternative procurement method that both utilized, we reached out to a limited number of vendors and used a limited timeframe due to the urgency of the project. We used the Borough Forest Directory, which lists 15 or 20 different firms that specialize in, in this type of work. It was within, under a week that we, that we asked folks to produce a quote to accomplish the work identified in our request for quotes. It was a successful solicitation in, in getting best value. We did receive six responses from, from different firms. There was a wide variation in costs. Some, some folks were, were pretty expensive and, and some were much cheaper. There's a lot of different reasons that, that may be, why that may be. We did have a, a meeting with, with both contractors that were, that provided the low quotes. Both were deemed responsive and responsible and, and capable to accomplish the work in, in the timeframe that we set forth. We are expecting to use state hazard mitigation grant funds for this project. If, if not, per the resolution, we are asking for authorization to use ARPA funds. And then finally, I will note the timeframe. We are hoping to begin work on Monday, hence the urgency of this project. And then the requirement is to conclude their work in Centennial and Swiftwater Park, which is nearly 1,000 trees, by May 19th. The other areas have a bit longer through May 31st for the work to be accomplished. So that, that concludes my report.
Thank you. So are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? And Madam Clerk, are there any people participating via Zoom who raised their hands?
I see no hands raised.
Thank you. This item is now back before the council. Are there any council member comments? Mr. Carey?
Thank you, Presiding Officer, Vice Mayor. I'm really alarmed about the delay between the time we might pass this and you start doing the work. You know, government never gets anything done in a timely fashion. We have to wait how many days, four or five? I just, oh, terrible. Do have a more serious question I'd ask. You mentioned that it was a relatively limited amount of time for people to get orders in. I understand it came up quickly. And again, I think it said there were six different, different firms. And, and my question would be, do you anticipate that there'll be change orders and that sometimes when, you mentioned there was a wide difference in the different bid amounts, sometimes people bid pretty low, but they, they know they can go ahead and get more money from, in this case, government by putting in change orders. And so I guess I'd ask the administration, are we pretty strict on that? I would hope that using these different government funds, that we, we're not liberal in terms of using more when there are change orders. And I just want to say I support this. I'm real pleased that we're going to start it right away. And I'm, but I'm always interested whether or not we anticipate there'll be change orders increased in the actual cost of this. And I don't know. I'll ask to the manager, but you know.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Carey. So the bids, the quotes were returned by Monday at 4:00 PM. And then all day Tuesday, our team, which included Parks and Rec, Public Works, our, our project manager, and our forestry consultant, all day Tuesday, they were discussing the bids, the quotes that they'd received, and verifying our level of confidence in the numbers that we got. And so they were on the phone with the two apparent low bidders, making sure we knew that they understood our expectations correctly, that they had bid the project correctly, that they knew all of the requirements, that they knew that the timelines were really important to us. And, and getting to a, a point where they were confident in the numbers that we received are, in fact, responsible and under full understanding of the project. And then I came into the meeting and grilled them again and made sure I was also comfortable. So we did that all day Tuesday. I would say that we are hoping to write the grants in a way that give us a little bit of flexibility, but in respect, with respect to change orders, we would only anticipate them right now based on number of trees. So really, the big unknown with the project is the number of trees. And even though Andrew's been out there counting them with Mitch and marking them off, it may be that through the project, we identify additional trees that would change that number because they were issued a quote on a unit basis, a per-tree basis. That would give us the ability to, to scale up somewhat. But we would not anticipate change orders due to oversights or any other kind of improper bidding. We think these numbers are accurate to the best of our abilities and that the, the firms are capable of doing the work.
So a question. So Andrew, have you been out actually flagging and marking trees that you want the contractors to take down?
We've been out with Mitch Michaud, our forestry consultant, painting, marking, which actually created a little bit of more confusion during the bid process because everything wasn't marked. The numbers obviously came in higher in terms of numbers of trees, but yeah, with, with the, we're relying on, on the contract with the forestry, foresters to assist us with identifying those ones that are brutally in our, should be in our sights and, as well as through his expertise, as well as some additional ones. So, yeah, marking them.
Mr. Ruffridge?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Parker. Just a question, I guess, for Kyle or Stephanie on the State of Alaska Hazard Mitigation Grant. What is the, what is the timeframe for those funds? I was just doing some quick looking here. It seems like potentially some of those are FEMA funds as well? Or I just found that sort of interesting, or maybe I was looking at the wrong thing. But is there a timeline that we are just sort of know if or when those grant funds are available?
Thank you, Councilmember Ruffridge, to the mayor. Monday, we're hoping to get the, we're hoping to get the obligating document on Monday. The contractor is on standby until we can execute that, that obligating document from the state. And once, once we receive those, we'll, we'll have confirmation of receipt of that, those grant funds.
Yeah, and thank you. And if I could add to that, it's, it is really a, a huge testament to the amount of work that the city had done over the past two years. Mr. Zarneski identified these, these original pot of FEMA funds, but they were a pass-through grant through the state agency. So these- So these folks at the state have been on board with us and aware of our project and the need the entire amount of time. So when we were able to call them a few weeks ago and say, we don't think this timing is going to work based on the urgency of what we're now seeing, they were highly innovative and flexible in terms of suggesting this alternate funding source. It may be that they were also originally federal funds, but they don't come with the same requirements that Mr. Cornellus mentioned earlier about the environmental assessment document. And the process itself is quite different in that they have worked directly with us to understand the needs, understand the project and the way we were bidding it, and potentially get us this obligating document by Monday. So that it's a highly expedient process, and I'm very grateful to the urgency with which they acted. And I think it's in part due to the work that the city staff had done leading up to that phone call.
Go ahead.
Yeah, that's, I was just looking through these forms. And I mean, yeah, I agree. That's, this is a lot of work to just get through for that simple grant. The only other question I had was the beetle kill trees that are along any of the highway frontage. And I'm specifically thinking of the ones next to the Soldatna ball fields. There is a few of those that have broken. Those are not our responsibility. And I think one of them actually went into the road over the wintertime. Whose responsibility is like the ones right up against the road and the bike path?
So thank you for the question through the Vice Mayor. Kyle was shaking his head, but I think we would just verify the location of the right-of-way. So that's a state right-of-way. So depending on how far back those property lines are, it may be that those are still within the right-of-way. We'll keep an eye on that because on the other side of the property line that we lease to the ball fields and the rodeo grounds, it is city property. So depending on exactly where that particular tree is, we'd be able to get an answer in terms of whose responsibility.
So I have a question. So we're going to hopefully get the state grant funds Monday. And if we don't, we'll use the ARPA funds. If we need to use those state grant funds, those will have to come back to the council at the May meeting to accept those?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Parker. That's correct. So we use the language here that we intend to be able to use those funds. They will have to be appropriated by the council in an ordinance and would be coming back at a future council meeting.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Yes?
I just wanted, in terms of what will be done with the trees? Again, I know 10-plus years ago, the Borough, when they were doing a huge amount, they actually, the trees that got down, they turned over to people so they could use them for firewood and that. I'm just wondering, what will happen to these trees as these two different, assuming they're both passed, that these different firms take these trees down?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Carey, through the mayor. We did, in our furious run-up to this project, contemplate an opportunity to provide our community, you know, firewood use and things of that nature, as other entities have done in the past. We ended up not doing that for several reasons. One, we believe that there is some cost reduction in the contractors' bids because they will be utilizing those trees. But the primary reason is the timeliness in opening those parks. The means and methods are up to the contractor, but in order to meet our timeframe, I think many of these trees are going to be picked up in their entirety, limbs attached, and put into trucks and trucked out. So the end result is that they are to be, they're required to be disposed of at the contractors' off-site location. So some were retaining, I believe, actually about 50 cords. So our park users in Swiftwater and Centennial will have some of the firewood retained on site. And then, you know, perhaps the contractor would make these available in some of the gravel pits.
Anything else? If not, may we have a vote, please?
Councilmember Carey?
Yes.
Chilson?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Ruffridge?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Parker?
Yes.
Student Representative Knowles?
Yes.
You have six yes votes.
Thank you. That brings us to the next laydown resolution, 2022-019, waiving formal bidding procedures and authorizing the city manager to execute contracts with Stumpy's Tree Service in the amount of $53,911 for spruce bark beetle hazard tree mitigation introduced by the city manager. May I have a motion to adopt, please?
Move the adoption of Resolution 2022-019, waiving formal bidding procedures and authorizing city manager to execute a contract with Stumpy's in the total amount of $53,911 for spruce bark beetle hazard tree mitigation.
Thank you, Councilmember Hutchings, for the second. Report from the administration, please.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Parker. The previous resolution awarded a contract for a Centennial park tree removal. This resolution would award a contract to a different firm for the remaining city parcels. So that includes Swiftwater Park, the Memorial Park, Aspen Park, which includes the Dog Park, West Readout Property, which has a smaller amount of trees. That's a bigger parcel, but we're going to just deal with a small number of trees there, as well as potentially some trees at Soldatna Creek Park. So this was the low quote received on those other park properties. If there's specific questions about the timing or the priorities of the order in which those parcels would be tackled, I'd be happy to defer those to either Mr. Cornellus or Mr. Carmichael. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public who would wish to speak on this item? Seeing no one, is there anyone participating through Zoom? Let's raise their hands.
I see no hands raised.
All right. Thank you. Having no one else who wishes to speak, the item is back before the council. Are there any council member comments? Mr. Ruffridge?
Thank you. I know I should have no comments, but actually just thought of one quick item on these. What is our, this has been very quick process, obviously, and I think people are aware that we have a problem with spruce bark beetles, though. It's been happening for a long time. However, there may be people in the public that are not aware that a bunch of trees are about to get gone. Are we doing any sort of public outreach to explain things might look quite a bit different by the middle to end of May in some of these areas?
Thank you, Councilmember Ruffridge. We are indeed. In fact, today, we kicked around a lot of different options, opportunities. I believe we got an email from Mr. Carmichael about their team making sandwich boards. I think doggone news is going to be utilized, as well as our online media accounts, and then the good old-fashioned door-to-door for, you know, locations where there's adjacent uses.
Any other council member comments or questions? And so for those areas, there's where we're cutting, there's just two areas where we've got nearby residents, right?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Parker. We identified the Memorial Park property and the Aspen Park property as potentially higher sensitivity to noise and disruption of neighboring parcel owners. So one of the things we included in the solicitation was shortened work hours allowable on those two sites. So if someone's, you know, we're going to give full site control to Centennial, we're going to give full site control to Swiftwater, and it may be that activities are happening earlier in the morning, later in the evening. I think we've restricted the hours that folks are going to be working at those two sites that are adjacent to homes and residences, recognizing that we want to mitigate the potential nuisance and the impact of that work.
Thank you. Seeing there are no other additional council comments, can we have a vote, please?
Councilmember Chilson?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Ruffridge?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Student Representative Knowles?
Yes.
You have six yes votes.
Thank you. On six to nothing, the resolution has passed, and good luck to the tree cutters as they go forward. This brings us to item 10, Mayor and Council Reports. Mayor Whitney, would you like to give your report?
I have nothing to add tonight, other than I'd rather be back in Soldatna.
It's a beautiful day. Thank you. Council reports on boards and commissions. Keene River Special Management Area, Mr. Carmichael.
Well, actually, the predominance of that meeting was covered with just updates and such like that, a little bit of lamenting on the state agencies going through the hiring processes and those type of things. But we've had a pretty good extensive presentation from the Borough Planning Office regarding the clear-cut plans up in Cooper Landing. That's our associate, similar to what we're kind of going through, but that was the gist of most of them, that they have a very extensive plan out there. It's going through the Borough now and as well as some public hearings and such like that with those plans to move forward and deal with beetle kills, as well as develop an ongoing planning development from the Borough side of things for that piece of property. Rest of the stuff we're moving forward with basically springtime work with various things landing, having been rebuilt and coming through past all the fish prognosises. Everybody's just kind of quiet and watching for that storm to hit. The most recent water report from DEC is still online. People wish to peruse that as far as the water quality analysis for the Keene River, as well as the overall state. So that's a living document that's updated and still going through that process. And then we're also headed into some recruitment for some board members.
Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Carmichael? Seeing none, that brings us to item 11, the city manager's report. Mrs. Queen?
Thank you. The first item was just to give the council an update on the increases to the budget in fuel costs. And we have fuel expenses from our fleet, whether it's the police department or all the way to heavy equipment. You know, we did a lot of extra snow clearing this year. We had anticipated needing to come back to ask for an additional appropriation, but we were able, working with the finance director, to find sufficient funding because when we came back a few months ago and asked for additional snow removal money, we did not end up needing to utilize all those funds. So the council appropriated an additional $85,000 this year for snow removal, and we only ended up using about $60,000 of that. So that $24,000, that was that extra appropriation already within our maintenance budget. We're going to transfer that to the relevant accounts, most of it in the general fund, but also a small amount in the airport fund, small amount in the utility fund. So no additional funds needed this year for fuel. We are building in an increase based on our fuel estimates for the upcoming year, and that'll be presented to the council on the 11th of May during our biennial budget work session. Secondly, wanted to let the council know, we did receive our updated premium, health insurance premium rates for the fiscal year that starts July 1. And from Aetna, we have a very significant increase in health insurance rates. This hasn't happened. We've been quite fortunate with our rates being very low, sometimes zero increase year over year. But this year, they informed us, it's approximately a 22.5% increase in premiums. We communicated out to all employees with a memo, talking about the rate increases, also doing a historical look back. Over the last 10-year period, we're averaging about 6.5% year over year. So we've been satisfied with this, but this rate increase this year will cause us to do some additional due diligence and take a harder look at the options available to us to keep it affordable, both for the city and for our employees. We, the city as an employer, pays 90% of the premium costs for an employee that's on an employee-only plan, and we pay 80% if an employee elects to cover their family, either a spouse, or children, or an entire family. So we'll be looking at a budget adjustment for FY '23 of approximately $240,000, which is the city's portion of that increase. And as I mentioned, we've got some funding. We'll be potentially taking a harder look at health insurance options and making sure that we're providing the best value to our employees. Next thing I wanted to note, we did have a board meeting of the Alaska Remote Seller Sales Tax Commission. At our recent meeting, we approved a fee reduction. So the commission approves and sets fees for the portion that goes to AML and their administration of this statewide contract to collect and remit remote sales tax from internet sales. And at a previous meeting, we had approved a retroactive fee reduction starting January 1. And based on the finance committee's review of our current funding, we were able to further reduce that portion of the fees, also putting it retro to January 1. So the portion of the fees that are charged to the two other software entities, those remain the same. But I think it's great that the board is able to work with Mills and his staff at AML to keep that portion that we can control really reasonable. So we reduced that percentage to 2.25, and that'll be retro back to January 1. And we also adopted the upcoming fiscal year budget with that same 2.25 in terms of that administrative portion of those fees. So that's good news. Tomorrow, I will be attending the Native Economic Forum that's being sponsored by K-PED, and it's going to be in Keene. And there's a really great lineup of speakers, so I'll be excited to attend that event. And then also on Friday morning, we're going to connect with Shirley Kelly, who is our point of contact at the Economic Development Agency. She's going to be coming to Soldatna, and we're going to, if the weather permits and the ground is dry, maybe walk some of the sites that are included in our potential redevelopment ideas. So we'll be hosting Shirley and happy to have her here on Friday. And I think that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for the city manager? Seeing none, this brings us to item 12, public comments. Members of the public will have three minutes to comment. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment? Yes, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Penny Badla, and I live at 399 West Riverview Avenue in Soldatna, Alaska. And I'd like to thank all of you for all the work you do for our city because you do a lot. And I think I'm here, and I'm going to talk about something that you may be already passed, because I've been out of town a lot in the last month and a half. There's a memorandum here about two-way video conferencing moving forward. Was that already decided upon? And it is moving forward? Thank you very much, because there are a lot of people who can't attend when they're busy and they're traveling and they're working on the school board or whatever. And there are also many people who are elderly and can't come in or don't want to come in. And I'm not there yet, Linda. And I think it's really important to offer every person in our community the opportunity to attend either in person or by teleconference because it's more inclusive, it's more transparent, and it shows that you really care about the community and what you do for them. So I thank you, and that's the reason I came, and I also wanted to hear about the solar. So thank you very much, and I'm done. I don't think I'll be asked any questions.
Any questions for Mrs. Badla?
Thank you, Penny.
Seeing none. Are there any other members of the public who wish to comment? And do we have anybody who's raised their hand on Zoom?
I see no hands raised.
All right. Thank you. That brings us to council member comments. And I would like to start first with our student representative, Emma Knowles.
At the moment, Sohigh is getting ready to take finals, and the Sohigh Theater Department is getting ready to perform arsenic and lace at 6 o'clock from April 28th to April 30th in the Sohigh Auditorium.
We will next go to Councilmember Hutchings.
Well, I just want to say thank you very much, Hannah. You always do such a great job, and you're so enthusiastic. And the park today was packed. When I went through for lunch, there were just cars everywhere. So thanks again, and I just have a happy moment. I'm going to my oldest granddaughter's graduation at UAA on Sunday. She's graduating with a master's in business administration. So thank you to all those regents that make sure that they have scholarship programs.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson?
And I don't have any comments tonight, just thanks to everybody that came out and testified this evening in person and on Zoom.
Councilmember Chilson?
I would just like to say thank you to our city administration staff and all the council members and just the participation in the work session prior to our meeting today on the ARPA funds. I thought that was a highly constructive and well-spent time coming through that process. I'm looking forward to see what we come out of that with.
Thank you. Councilmember Ruffridge?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Parker. Agree with Mr. Chilson. I enjoyed our work session. Also want to correct Ms. Knowles, it's Sohigh is putting on arsenic and old lace. I don't know why I need to do that. There's actually quite a bit of theater going on in the Keeneup Peninsula. Nikiski Middle High is also putting on Aladdin production this weekend, and the Keeneup perform- performers will be following that the next week and for two weeks with the importance of being earnest in Oscar Wilde play. So a lot of good opportunities while we're waiting for flowers and green grass to go finish out the theater season. So go enjoy.
Thank you. And Councilmember Carey?
Thank you, Vice Mayor and Presiding Officer. Couple things. One, that work session was awesome today. The idea that we all got together, we talked about ideas, ways that we could help improve the city thing, programs that we had, funds that were unexpected. Again, I think it reflects very well on the management of the city by this administration. And it also speaks well to the council. It was a very good discussion. Again, all ideas were taken, everything was, again, people added in to different ideas. I just think that was very healthy. I attended, two weeks ago and two days, the infrastructure on federal grant monies. It was wonderful. I believe I have a responsibility as a member of the council, whenever I get to go somewhere and get on the city dime, to provide a report and out front, and it's also in our packets. And I just mentioned just a few things. It was wonderful. One, it was a beautiful day, and again, the 9th Center, again, up top floor with all the windows everywhere, and everyone, you could see the mountains, and just, it was so beautiful, these people from all over the country that came to make presentations, but more importantly, people from all over the state, to the extent that they didn't have enough chairs for everyone to sit down, if you can imagine. It's a huge presentation that had been planned by, again, the senior senator from the state of Alaska to showcase what the government's doing, what the state needs. And again, it was just wonderful, from all over the state to these communities that came forward because there is such great need. There is so much that needs to be done, particularly in the rural area of the state. And one of the things addressed repeatedly in dealing with this infrastructure is those areas that do not have clean water, who do not have sewer, who do not have those basic amenities of life for most of us, disprove that. Huge, huge change in quality of life, just in that one area. Again, $1.2 trillion does cover a lot of stuff. Bill was passed six months ago, they then got the enabling legislation passed to say how to start spending it, then they're passing it down to the departments, the agencies, the firms, the different groups. The thing that was mentioned most often is, we're not ready yet to even start accepting anything because we don't even have the applications out. It's government at its best. But also, it did mention, on those things that are not new programs, on those programs that do exist but could use more funding, they had more capacity, but again, we'd have the funds, that they're going ahead and moving funds there. So the state of Alaska has already, according to their numbers, received a billion dollars of additional funds for programs and activities that they've already approved. I found the presentators were very good. Left here at 6:00 in the morning, started at 10:00. I got in at 10 minutes to 10, and so it was good. I love sitting in the very front row when I go to things, kind of like church. And again, it was just interesting watching every speaker. I got really lucky, being left-handed, I'm always trying to be on edge, just to get that arm out there. And it was fortunate, it was three seats away from where Senator Murkowski was to see, and no one sat next to her, because it was kind of neat to see the senator before she made her remarks, and just the great work that she did. This course is to fix up the deteriorating infrastructure of this whole country. There is so much that needs to be done, and again, they want people to know that they're working on it with this huge bill. One of the issues mentioned continually with this is that we don't have anywhere near the workforce to do this. You know, we had a speaker mentioning Homer Electric earlier, one of the things with Homer Electric, we, the shortage of linemen. There is, on so many different, particularly middle-level work, but technically difficult work, there isn't the workforce that's been developed. The lack of vocational education in our schools is coming to roost. We need to be allowing people in schools to learn how to use their skills or God-given talents to make the world a better place. And there is going to be an issue with having enough workers to meet the needs of all these projects as they fund them and get them going, and so it's just interesting. On the other hand, this need, as it always is in developing country, that as we have this need, we will meet it, and this will provide us then a new generation of workforce individuals for the future. And so, yes, there's a deficit now, but we'll meet that deficit absolutely, and that'll provide us then the impetus as we move forward. In the last major legislation, this type, the transportation bill, the billions spent there, there was a limit in terms of looking for capacity. To get funding from it, how many people had to be served? And that transportation bill, and the Congressman Young chaired the House Transportation Committee, the cap is 500,000 people. That really left Alaska kind of out, to have a project that had to benefit 500,000 people. The airport in Anchorage certainly did that, but others didn't. And I mention that only because this does not have such capacity thresholds. And so they're going to look at different types of projects that need to be done. Again, the priority of needing it to do. There will certainly be a certain amount of added, I'll say points, that may not be the correct term, but added things if it serves more people. But there will not be the automatic cutoff that there was with transportation funding at least a while back. They did continually mention band together with others, work with other municipalities, other units of government, other agencies, that whenever people can come together, which is inherently healthy, hopefully, it helps with getting the projects approved. They did also mention that in every category, relatively speaking, 5% or 10% or 15% of the total funds for that category must go for projects for indigenous peoples in the country. That's going to benefit us greatly. So that, again, there are certainly huge projects that could use a huge amount of the money in different areas, but 5% or 10% or 15% in each category has to be particularly focused in this area of our country, of our population, that again, in many areas, has great needs that have not been met. And by numbers, they wouldn't be met, but because of, again, we're concerned with Senator Murkowski, Sullivan, and Congressman Young, there's going to be much more done to help the people here in the state. It's going to improve the quality of life for all of us. Obviously, when we improve their condition of life, it improves ours very much as well. It's going to create a huge need for a new category of people, and we've seen that in the city and others have, and that's grant writers. Boy, if you have any interest in being a grant writer, or you'd like a new profession or a new aspect, go into grant writing. There's going to be a need for tens of thousands of them, and it's going to be an ongoing thing because they'll go through, again, a reallocation of funds that don't get spent. Also, they're going to need a lot of directors and managers. All of these programs are going to need people, and again, so directors, managers, and different things. So again, another workforce, a middle-class type workforce, a little bit higher from this. And so again, if you have a young person in particular that doesn't know what to do, go into grant writing. Boy, there'll be lots of needs and a diversity of things you can learn about and you can help with. I really enjoyed seeing the young presenters. And again, that's just part of where I'm at in life in terms of, I can think back when, there was a time when I was younger and I was doing stuff like this, and now to see all these young people that were so eager to be of service. It was just really nice to be out there and listen to their presentations. I did initially, I want to thank our acting city clerk. When I wrote my initial report, I added some comments about things, and very wisely, she wrote back, said, "Well, do you want to keep all those comments in there?" And she was very wise, and again, if you give me a day on anything, I kind of mellow it a little bit, and so that I took out the comments that were maybe didn't need to be. But I'm going to mention a couple of them now, but there's not the official record of them. I did not like it when one of the major maps they showed to all of us of the United States did not include the state of Alaska. We weren't even off the state of California. It was a map of the United States, not Alaska. But again, I'm sure they used that presentation all over the whole country. But again, and the clerk was very wise, I won't mention which department was on anything. Oh, there's going to be electric school buses everywhere. It was mentioned repeatedly, one of the things in this bill, I've got to tell you, it must be the number one bonus for everywhere. Spend money, and you get electric school buses. So again, I just have to assume, hope they can plug them in somewhere. I guess everybody will be up on the hill, plug it in the buses. But again, boy, they talk so much about electric school buses, and that's obviously a program that this administration wants to see. I won't do any of the other negative. I want to thank Senator Murkowski for the work that she did. This was a major, major endeavor, and bringing it up so that everybody could discuss about the ideas and get a sense of it. There's going to be a huge amount of work. You know, government works best when people participate, and big government works better when more people participate, and this is as big as you get. And so again, this municipality, this state needs to be very engaged, the people need to be engaged. They haven't even written yet all the programs. You don't even know yet what type of things they're going to be funding. They're looking for ideas of how to spend the money. They said it'll take five to seven years just to get the money out. And again, there'll still be a year or two just to get all the different programs written so that you can start the process. And so again, please, you know, we have this great advantage of the internet that we can participate in ways that we never could before. In the past, we had to fly to Juneau, we had to fly to DC, we had to fly to these different centers to meet with those important people. Now, cyberly, we can be much more involved, and our people are educated. So I just want to say it was a wonderful conference. I greatly enjoyed getting an overview of what's going on and interacting and seeing all the different people that were there. And last thing I just want to mention, this community, again, we are a healthcare provider, and we keep people healthy and hearing the huge costs for healthcare, but healthcare is really important. Each person, please take care of your health, do those things that are necessary so that you stay healthy. And again, it is really nice to live in a community in the state that has top-of-the-line healthcare services available. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Carey. For the record, Alaska does have an electric school bus, and that is in Tok. So that there brings us to item 14, executive session. There is none tonight. Meeting announcements, May 4th is the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting at 5:30. That meeting has been canceled. May 5th is the Parks and Rec Advisory Board meeting at 5:30. May 11th, we will have a city council work session, the mid-biennium budget review at 4:30, followed on May 11th by the city council meeting at 6:00. With no other business to come before the city council tonight, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming.